All right, so say welcome to the town of Berlin.
Welcome to the town of Berlin. This is a regular session meeting.
For the Berlin Maryland Council.
For the Berlin Maryland Council.
And then ask if they can join us in a moment of silence?
Can you join us in the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance? Now join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so then say the first item on our agenda is what?
The first item on our agenda is?
The approval of the consent agenda.
The approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, and then hopefully one of them will make a motion to approve.
Well, Madam and Mr. Mayor, I have a correction to the minutes.
You want to throw us a curveball?
That's right. On page, what is this, page six or seven of the packet?
Page six of the packet?
Yes. The last sentence of the paragraph beginning with finance director Natalie Solay.
Give us just a second.
Actually, it's page eight of the packet.
Eight.
Six.
Yes, yeah, six.
Sorry, page eight of the packet.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, the paragraph that begins with finance director Natalie Solay. The last sentence of that paragraph, Ms. Bowlin indicated that the council should not take the time to clarify what conditions they wish to place on the sale. I believe that the word "not" should be taken out.
And we should take the time.
Yes.
I checked with Ms. Bowlin, she concurred.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the minutes for May 28?
I'll make that motion with the correction.
Thank you. Second. So say we have a motion by Councilmember Ors.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ors.
And a second by Councilmember Green.
And a second by Councilmember Green.
Say all in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All opposed.
Nobody was opposed, so then what we have to do is summarize the vote for the record. So you can say, um, the vote was unanimous and all council members are present.
The vote was unanimous and all council members are present.
There you are, let me check this one off of our list. And then say item number two, actually, let me do this because I get to introduce you. So the second item on our agenda is our Madam Mayor that we have this evening. And Bianca is a student from Ulster Prep who completed the If I Were Mayor essay contest at Ms. Schinko's class. And for those of you that are watching at home, if you want your child to win the If I Were Mayor essay contest, make sure they're in Ms. Schinko's class. Because she has produced winners at least for the past, what, three years? Um, and, uh, and then there's also runners up as well that have also placed. But Bianca has written her essay and made it through that process and was our district winner. With that, all the students in fourth grade in Buckingham and at Ulster Prepatory School and across the state of Maryland had the opportunity to write essays about what they would do if they were in the capacity as mayor. And Bianca's essay, I think, hits home to what we're working on here in the town of Berlin. So first of all, I want to give her a huge round of applause for her. Secondly, I don't think there's been a better opening to the meeting since I've been the mayor. So thank you for that. And now I'm going to turn it over to you to read your essay if you don't mind.
If I were mayor, I would structure more buildings and do what is best for our town. The thing I'd like to focus on is to put more stoplights, stop signs, and traffic cops to take care of the chaos of Highway 113. The street goes through the middle of Berlin, Maryland, which causes traffic if one person wants to go from one side to another, which is very likely. An example, if there was a ballpark on one side of Berlin and a dog park on the other, a person who wants to go to both would have to cross 113, and it is a busy road, which isn't safe for pedestrians passing the street. I really need my citizens to be, A, safe of all kinds, and B, to make people see you as a good mayor. When you leave a town, you have to know how to show leadership or how to make people help. To do this, you could listen to people, agree, sometimes disagree because some ideas aren't that good, and include everyone. To make people help, you could always give a badge or a small money reward to make people excited about it. You always have to show that you're capable of being mayor. People would also help if you made an interesting plan of working. Example, if you could basically make people dance with a broom while sweeping the floor, people would think they're playing games, but they are actually working and cleaning. If I were mayor, I would do what's best for our town, Berlin.
How old are you? Ten, seven, eight years? You gonna be the mayor?
I mean, with these plans, she's like...
She's going.
So do you do a lot of dancing at home with brooms? You know, wax on, wax off on your head? I'm just wondering, because the points you made are spot on. Inclusivity, you're making, you're thinking of both sections of the town, which are definitely... I mean, I don't know if you attended to a lot of what we discussed here, but the points you made were... Ms. Schinko, did you give her points? Did she come up with this on her own?
She came up with this all on her own.
I am, and I'm teasing when I say that because really and truly, a lot of what you said are things that we have as a, as a body have been working on and trying to figure out for the last several months, maybe possibly years. That divide that you talk about, that there's something on one side of the highway and something on the other, how do you, how do you bridge that gap before a power down? And I like how you took ownership, like you were straight up the mayor in this letter.
Any other words of advice or any appreciation for our mayor?
Well, Bianca, congratulations, it's very exciting. I agree with your message. And also note to Ms. Schinko, those of you who may not know that Ms. Schinko completed her last year at Ulster Prep on Friday, she's dear to me.
I didn't know that. No one heard that?
You're going to break my pen. She taught my son, he's going into junior year, so it's four, well, seven years ago. She's a special teacher, I think you know that. Bianca and the parents that are behind know that too, so I know we're going to miss you at the school. And congratulations on three straight years and the poor person that takes her place. With the pressure for the next year, but yeah, excellent teacher. And she's not even, you know, it's Monday, she completed her last day Friday, she's here, so you know how much that means to her.
Well, I'm going to miss seeing you for a fourth grade essay contest. Yeah, you can't ask her, you have a fabulous, had a fabulous teacher. You're going on to fifth grade now, right? They approved that? They approved you going to fifth grade?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's a good thing.
What a lovely lady.
And then, yeah, Ms. Schinko, we can't say enough about how awesome you are.
Thank you.
Whatever the next chapter is, we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Anything else for my colleagues on the council?
I was just going to say, very, very impressive essay. I really liked the part where you said, you can always, to get people to help, give them a badge or a small money reward. I like that.
I do like your essay. You know, I especially like the advice you gave, Mary. In order to, to lead a town, you have to show leadership.
I got her number, we'll call her if we got a problem. Well, Sarah does. I don't really have anyone's number. I really don't want anybody's number, but Sarah does. And anything else that we want to add? If not, then let's, uh...
I want to take a picture.
Yes, let's get a picture right up front if you don't mind together. And then I suggested, and I don't know if the council feels the same way, that we can maybe dismiss our mayor because the rest of the meeting is really not that impressive. Do you agree?
Yes.
All right, so let's get a picture together and then...
Let me get one of them.
Well, it's not mine, it's the mayor's.
Hold the apple while you're...
Go ahead, have a seat.
Got to have that one.
You and your counsel.
The water to rip it out.
I got to hold the whole crab mouth.
A pocket.
There you go.
Hold on, Ms. Schinko, hop up here, this is your desk.
Now, do you want to know something cool about that mouth? Well, yeah, well, it's truly called. It's, uh, I think the tree that produced this wood was several hundred years old and older than the town of Berlin, and it grew on Berkeley Street. So when I became the mayor, they, I had asked a gentleman to make that for me. Pretty cool, isn't it? Take one, yeah. Have a seat.
Okay, everyone with their names?
See if I'm holding it like that or...
Watch your fingers, Steve.
And then, uh, let's get, uh, let's get your family up here. Let's do one up here with the flags and the entire county. So let's move these chairs out of the way. This is the fun part, you need Ms. Schinko, stay up here. Can I get away that? Yeah, slide, either slide the chairs, let's get a good picture. Sarah, go. Slide the chairs out of the way so it looks good. You might have to stand here, Sarah.
Oh, yeah, I don't see if this is too close.
Let's try to balance it out, if we can, speed by mine.
Relate the middle.
I'll catch your stare. Mary, come on.
Mary, come on.
Come on, Mary, come on.
Get in there, cookie baker. I don't know, Shanika thought you were saying Mary fix cookies or something.
Fancy, Sarah.
I can't hold my gun.
Thank you, so much.
Congratulations.
Well, I'll be right back, it's like two minutes.
Wax off, wax off.
I'll be right back. You know, why just play with the...
Take it yourself, just say it.
Right. I D C, I D C.
Amy, do you want to start with the first item under the motion for approval? And I'll be right back.
No, we'll wait for you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be right back. We have that beat with the...
We'll wait for it, buddy.
It was in the process.
Oh, it's totally back in the corner.
Okay.
Where's the line?
We can just wait a few minutes until he gets back.
This is the dance number portion.
Jack, you were supposed to bring dinner.
I was, yes.
Hey, man, I want those commercials. Yes, I was, I gave myself a drink there. You know, one of those commercials.
You stay, Jack, we're cleaning your house.
I'm making a meal.
My daughter loves those commercials right now.
You got your chocolate and my peanut butter.
Hopefully, yes, from any of those kind of go.
You're trying!
Yes.
Steve, did you get a new carpet?
No, I had it for my boyfriend, James.
I didn't, still, it's all...
It's like a little bunny that goes...
I guess it couldn't be worse.
Yeah. Round the front of all these places.
I've never really been taken that big.
Jimmy, you got that, you firm this that set on icebox?
I would, but I'd get overruled. Cold, cold.
We're always cold, we're like...
Jack, I brought you a mirror. You might have gone a few years ago. As a matter of fact, I just wanted to help with the sugar.
No, Charlie, we need to knock it down a bit.
All right, thank you all for, uh, for tuning in for that awesome moment. I think that anytime our youth are able to focus on local government and learn the challenges that are in front of us and then put themselves in our shoes for just a little while, I think it has an immense amount of value. Uh, Steve, you broke my heart by Ms. Schinko, I'm sort of going to have to recover from that. All right, up next is item number three, which are items for approval, just so that everybody's aware in the public, you are capable of providing comment in between each one of these motions for approval before their action, so we will ask for that. It is limited to two minutes. First item on our agenda is motion 2024-30, the dissolution of MOU. Town Attorney David Gass will turn the rough point on that.
This MOU is between the mayor and council and, and the third, it came about back in 2019 when the, uh, the town had a master plan from, which was generated by the Army Corps of Engineers study concerning stormwater in the town. And we had listed Mr. Hammond's property as we were going to do a future stormwater project on his property. He became, he was rightfully concerned about that because we hadn't discussed anything with him. And so we came to this agreement whereby we agreed to pull that project because, number one, we hadn't engineered it, we didn't have the money for it at the time, and still do, to my knowledge. And we agreed to do that. And we also agreed that if we were in the future going to seek funding for and planning and engineering for that project affecting his property, that we would sit down with him, consult with him, and use best practices and allow him input on how we were going to do this. And that, that's what the memorandum of understanding states. And I believe that's how it should be interpreted because that's what it says, number one, and number two, that's what the intent was. Mr. Hammond has recently begun interpreting the MOU as allowing him to consult on projects that are not owned by the town, that occur on private property that, in his opinion, affect his property. He and I have had discussions, I've told him that that's not what the intended agreement was, and he believes that it is. So at some point, recently, some council members have indicated that they'd like to revisit the same MOU, so here it is today.
And then also with that, upon the idea of looking into this further, we did have some staff level meetings, which included a subset of the council, town administrator myself, and town attorney. I think that from that, the recommendation is to terminate the MOU. So if there's any questions, then we'll open it up for a public comment.
Just have a question because, and I'm not calling you guys out, but, um, mayor, you were council member, council member, for all, you were on the council. What was the reason for this in the first place?
I'll speak to my vote of a yes vote as council member. Really, I think, and I've articulated this to Mr. Hammond, and I've also articulated this to the body in full, my yes vote was on the premise of what Gass will just explain. With that, I think that the intention was well-intended. I think that to Gass's point, it may, the interpretation might be a little bit different on the other side of the MOU. And I've explained to Mr. Hammond that even though our recommendation is to terminate the MOU, it doesn't mean that we're not open to those conversations still. It just means that there would no longer be this document in place. We, of course, have a stormwater utility, we have a public input session on every major project, the individual level projects, there's opportunity usually for comment through those sub boards, commissions, or committees. So I think there are enough mechanisms in place that I fully stand by my vote as a council member at the time, but I also stand by the recommendation right now to terminate. Vice President, bro.
My vote was just as described by Dave. If the town is going to have any project that impacts on any citizen's property, they should be consulted and have that opportunity to provide input, not after the, the deal is struck, but, but during that development process. And I think that's on the fact.
All right, Dave, is it typical for an MOU such as this to not have an expiration date that allows you to reassess after a certain term?
I don't think it's atypical. I mean, because we had no idea and still have no idea if, for when that project that is the subject of the MOU is going to come about.
I think, um, I think that I tend to ask a lot of questions, as everyone knows, and I did ask some questions of Gass and Mary and mayor about this MOU and the agreement, the history. I asked if there was a process in place to review all MOUs, to see if, you know, to see if they're all for applicability, are there expiration dates, are there, what is the process to terminate, should one party decide to do that? So, you know, I, I don't want to sit here and say that I am the reason that this is here, but these are just questions that I had from the town side.
All right, let's open it up for public comment regarding motion 2024-30. Anyone in attendance that would like to address the mayor and council regarding the motion? Okay, seeing none, we will seek action from the council.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve motion 2024-30.
So the motion by councilmember Ors to approve motion 2024-30?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Green, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that the vote is unanimous, motion 2024-30 passes unanimously. Up next is motion 2024-31, the approval of FY25 contracts. Town Administrator Mary Bowlin will turn the rough point.
Excuse me, these are contracts that are awarded typically on annual leases that exceed $10,000, therefore exceed my spending authority. Most of them are in line with how they have been for many years, there may be nominal increases on a couple of them.
If you don't mind just hitting, some of the ones we've discussed previously, such as cards for IT services, just bringing everybody in the public up to speed on kind of what we're working on there and how that's applicable.
The main addition to the information technology contract for this year is the add-on of the, it's actually, even though it's spelled one N T U G E R, it's pronounced integer. That is a cybersecurity feature.
I'm talking predominantly about the stuff that we're doing with Bullet Point.
Well, that, that's getting into, into that. The integer core security is part of the cyber, overall cybersecurity function. And the audit that we are undertaking is going to look carefully at cybersecurity. At the same time, in the same period of time that we aborted the bulletproof contract, we were notified by the state of Maryland that additional cybersecurity requirements have been put into place with municipalities. So it's actually very fortuitous that bulletproof is already meeting the requirements by the state and that we have added this core security piece. It is not to say there may not be additional pieces that we need to add later to comply with the state's requirements, but this does put us a step ahead on that.
There are also a few that will be coming up, just so that they're all aware, in the next couple of months, not longer than, I would say, before we do this again next cycle, we'll probably look at a few that, due to some of our grant requirements and stuff like that, it keeps us on the forefront. Every five years, we review certain vendors and go to bed.
Those would primarily be, for Davis, Boden, and Fidel of PA Engineering will be doing RFQ process to review those on-call services. Actually, that was something that I had hoped to have started by now, but it's just not happened yet. PK Investment Advisors also, PKS, the group that does our annual audit, has also submitted their pricing for this year, which would be a total of $46,500, and have recommended acceptance for FY25 and '26 at $40,200 and $42,200. You do not have to accept those tonight, but you can. The only change to those amounts would be if a single audit requirement is implemented in those years, that's dependent on how much federal funds that we spend.
So everybody that's looking, you would be looking at the base rate for PKS. So where that's $39,000, if you're looking at the total sum, that's because, due to the amount that we have in some grant funds, it requires that single audit and stuff like that. Those are the add-ons you see below. So it would go from $39,000 to $40,200, and then $42,200. All right, any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question regarding cards. This is from Mary, so if Bullet Point does their analysis, completes it, and then we put together, they're going to put together the RP, we submit that, let's say, six months from now, is this contract, are we going to cancel it? To the best of my knowledge. Yeah, because I hate to be locked in for a full year and then you get something to change for less.
Mary, can you tell us about Shader Fireworks?
That's the company that does the annual Fourth of July fireworks.
And we typically try to, and Ivy's done a really good job at this, fundraised half of it.
And the railroad, I just have a question on that. Does the lease agreement cover weed along the railroad track in a certain distance? Because I believe, I had, well, it came up because of a neighbor on Baker Street, you know, Baker Street, folks have been through quite a bit, Baker construction project, the new business that had been there last year. The weeds are about six feet tall, and she, I asked her if it's like a call down law, you know, and they're like, no, that's railroad property, which I totally get. So how, is it included in the lease agreement if it's not? How do you feel about getting them to, how are you maintaining their...
I don't know that it's so much part of the lease agreement, but it's their property. They're responsible as any property owner. However, Jamie has recently been reaching out.
Okay, great.
And they're subject to the town code.
Yes, that's what...
So, I mean, it is, but we do have a high requirement for grass and things like that.
We had contacted from, sending an email again this morning, we had a conversation about two to three weeks ago about dressing from 346 to the way to Evans Road, and he said they would start that. Then I wrote an email this morning, included Marion on the email, and we're waiting to hear back. I did not see a return email from him today. So we're, we're trying to get some information from them on how they will clean it up. And I know in years past, they sprayed, and I know there was some issues with that too, And I know in years past, they sprayed, and I know there was some issues with that too. So we're waiting to hear back, and then we'll continue contacting them.
Is there a worst-case scenario? We don't want to hear back. Dot, dot, dot.
What about this? So there's ways that folks have worked with other entities to be able to manage costs. If we were to maybe get them to come off the $20,000 lease, do you think it would be a huge lift for your department to maintain that, just in the strip of downtown?
It would be a lot of work.
It would be? Okay.
It'd be a lot of work because it's so overgrown now.
No, 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 I mean, like, once they get it to a state, right now it's theirs.
Right.
But if they get it to a state that it's manageable, is it something you feel like you could maintain?
We could maintain it, it's just that it would be.
Because every few years, we're right back at this.
Yeah.
I mean, I've watched the show, I've watched it more than me, but I've watched the show happen several times. So.
It could, it is work we could do. We do have some equipment that helps us with that. What if it is, but it's a, it's a two-week time-consuming project, probably each time we do it.
Each time? How often do you think it would happen?
So we did it once in May. We're probably looking at, probably in July, because of that regrowth is already back up to your knees and.
But it's not every month, it's just during like peak growth.
It's probably three, three to four times a year.
So if we can get $20,000, do you think the work is manageable?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see what we can do.
All right.
But then stay on them without getting this part done. But I'll, would the group be open to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Because these, just so that we're clear, the big bulk of this, Mary, is utility easements that are going underneath and things of that nature that.
To oversimplify, if we go under or over, we have to pay.
So predominantly, most of this is utility based. So just so everybody knows what we're looking at here. All right, so any feedback or comments from the public regarding motion 2024-31? Just name and street name, just come forward to the table if you don't mind.
Sorry, Jane Johnson, 363 Searlane. I just had a quick question about the Germans Cleaning Services. I don't know if anyone knows this, but do we know why we chose that company to do a contract with? Is it the cheapest stuff to do, or is it something that's been established in the past?
So there's some specialization with the vendor, but I'll let the chief of police, because it predominantly impacts the police department.
It was considerably less than the other vendor that we actually had and provided, definitely that's better service, but one, the contractors have to be vetted, have to pass background checks, and again, our last contractor did the whole town in their contract. We just pulled out our portion, was considerably more than $11,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome home with a summer.
Thank you, I just graduated, actually.
Congratulations.
And what's the, hold on, stop, stop, stop.
Sorry, my question's okay.
What, yeah, now we can ask you.
Political science with modern environmental sustainability.
Very nice. And what's your, what's your plan, what's your path?
I think I want to go into my masters during the spring semester, so either at the house and or UMD.
Well, congratulations.
Good job.
Beautiful sense.
All right, anyone else from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-31? Oh, I forgot to introduce our interns.
That's okay, I thought you might.
Did Jake, where did Jake go?
Took a little break.
Okay, well, when Jake gets back, you stand up, I'm sorry, and then I'll introduce both of you. I apologize with our, our new mayor, I forgot to introduce our interns, so I apologize. All right, let's see, so nobody else from the public regarding motion 2024-31? And then now, let's see if the council can approve. Motion approved 2024-30. A motion by council member Mary, a second by council member Nichols. All in favor, say aye. Call a vote. Let the record reflect that the vote's unanimous. Now, let's take a break for a moment and come back to what I forgot to do after all the excitement of our little mayor. So, Arusa Islam, just stand up for us if you don't mind. Perfect. Worcester Prep graduate and rising senior at American University is with us in the mayor's office for the summer. And then Jake Parker, stand up. A rising sophomore from Gettysburg College studying both, your comment about political science. And they're both working, you can sit back down, Jake, thank you, are both working about 15 hours a week in the mayor's office through the summer. So you'll see Arusa, and I keep wanting to call you Aruna.
Aruna.
Arusa and Jake throughout town are helping out in the visitor's center as well. They've got some special projects around the town. But then, this is the council, and I think you've met a lot of the department heads so far, and they'll be joining us for each of our meetings, as well as working on some special projects. So let's give them a round of applause. Thank you both. One of the things that we're going to work with them on is trying to get some actionable summaries from like our boards, commissions, and committees. They'll take a look at some of the meetings and then try to send over some action items, similar to what Steve has been doing with like the media roundup type thing. Just trying to help get a little bit more information in a timely manner to all of us. And then also, we're going to try and, probably not this meeting, but looking into July, trying to get a summary of kind of the items that we've sort of got on our agenda coming up that we want some public comment on, as well as some of the action items that we've taken from the meeting. They'll help summarize some of that, so we can get that up with the public as well. So just a couple of the cool projects. So, thank you both.
So we're going to go to the next motion. I did have a question, actually, on the contracts, but just real quick on Mary. Of these contracts that we approved, how many, if any, report to us directly?
What I mean by that is they provide like a annual report where they come here and give us the status update. And how often?
Well, I would say that the engineering firms provide reports on topics as requested, as needed. Obviously, the auditors appear once a year.
Worcester Newt.
The rest are, yeah, Worcester Newt does, and the rest are.
Come on, girl.
Project, it'd be a specific job-oriented kind of thing, so.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to our next item, which is motion 2024-33, and that's the tattoo moratorium extension. So with, with that, what we've been doing, this has been extended several times as well, but what we're, what we're working on is really a conversation with our health department. They have put us in touch with some resources that, some resources that we would like to explore a little bit further. Those resources include some, some information from the University of Maryland School of Law, as well as the Johns Hopkins School of Public Health. With that, the tattoo advisory committee has been working, as I said, in conversation with the health department. That includes the town attorney, the town administrator, myself, and then the three members on the advisory committee. We believe that there are some questions that still need to be answered. We have a draft ordinance in play that's been in play for, for many years, not acted upon by this body, but kind of like putting together our best practices, that we would like to see if this were to move forward. The challenge that we're having now is the health and safety inspections. We want them to be proactive, not reactive. So the best way to form those and then make sure that there are a place that are pulled from best practices, as well as protecting the health and safety. With that, the state of Maryland does not have regulations on the books for tattooing. Just to refresh everybody's memory how this came, came about, several years ago, what, Gaskell, five?
At least.
Six years ago.
2017, 2017.
2017, the town was approached by somebody wishing to start microblading. So what that is, is cosmetic tattooing. They wanted to open that service in one of the beauty salons in town. That sparked the conversation about tattooing, the fact that the town had nothing on the books. So to prevent an entity from starting a tattoo shop or starting microblading, as the original question came to the town, we do need to have something called a moratorium in place. We're trying to seek that extension for one year, so that we can work with the state and the entities that we've outlined a moment ago, to try and find a path for it.
So some years ago, the county addressed tattoo partners, right?
In the eighties.
So, because, well, there was actually somebody who wanted to put a tattoo shop on the board of all condition city. So that's how this, my understanding, you know, this is about 10 years ago now. And what basically happened was, by allowing, by actually requiring that a physician or nurse practitioner be on hand for any of these businesses, that basically ended it, because this hospital did it. So the tat, so the town of Earl End, it's not included on the, the overall of the county's ordinance as a result of back then.
So the county's ordinance only handles entities outside of municipally incorporated areas. The town of Ocean City, I believe, has something on the books. I don't know about Snowville, and I don't know about.
Ocean City has an ordinance, and it's the same as the counties where a physician has to, for us.
So the barrier to entry to that is very, very high.
Yeah.
And to your point, it's designed that way to keep folks from having those types of establishments.
So it sounds like the position of the advisory committee or the committee is to try to find a way forward without having that.
So our view, going back to 2017, has been that we're in an arts and entertainment area. We promote that pretty heavily. If somebody chooses to make their canvas their skin, hey, but that, that's them, right? Now, do we think that every spot should have that? No, it needs to be set up in a zoning that's acceptable, which our ordinance kind of addresses, I think, does a decent job, but it's really never seen the light of day, right? So in order to do that, I think that we'll get some more feedback and better, a better end of product. But the big missing component is the health and safety inspections.
Yeah.
Currently, the ability to bring somebody on contractually, the only, and the only place that existed at the time we looked into it was across the bridge. So we would be relying on the health department, the Board of Health, to be able to do that. They've been very helpful as far as providing information, but there's nothing really at the state level, which is true where the conversation, I think, has to go, about putting that on the books. All around us, I think the summary that the University of Maryland produced, West Virginia, Virginia, Pennsylvania, they, a lot of those, Delaware, all have regulations on the books, but we're silent. So I think that now with having, we've never had the University of Maryland involved in the conversation, from a legal perspective, looking into this. We've never had Johns Hopkins University School of Health looking into this from a public health standpoint. So I think we have some more tools at our disposal to have that conversation, but we're, it's, it's a year out at least, so.
So, full disclosure, I am an employee of the health department, but not the Worcester County Health Department anymore, a different county. So I, I say that because I feel like I can discuss it in this. So for that reason, you, to have those discussions, you feel it would be a year?
I think six months is too short. I think a year is probably going to be too short.
I would think too, that if you were to find the right answer, you could lift the moratorium, is that one of those things?
But the situation was, in trying to provide for these, these health inspections, the only way forward would be for the town of Earl End to enter into an agreement with someone qualified to do those, do those inspections. And then if that costs you, would be then your responsibility, our taxpayer, and to, to assess a license fee comparable to covering that cost for any individual business, that would be absolutely difficult. So this is the spot we want to assess it.
And, and you served on the committee too, for one. The, the other portion of that is that there are entities within the state of Maryland that you can legally have a tattoo shop, but the health department is not coming in and doing proactive health and safety inspections, which is what we wanted. It was complained recently. And that is not the path that we wanted for Earl End.
So if it were for this, just.
Well, we got to ask, oh, I'm sorry. Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-33? Okay, seeing none, we will seek action from the council.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the motion 2024-33, create a tattoo moratorium for a year, so that the committee can obtain further information.
A motion by council member Horace, a second by vice president Burrell. All in favor, say aye. Call a vote. Let the record reflect that motion 2024-33 passes unanimously.
So are we still going to have Matt and the crew come and give us a break, a synopsis of where they stand and what's going on with this?
Yes, I think, I think we, we will, but we will also need a little bit more information from the University of Maryland, Johns Hopkins, and then I think another briefing would be a good thing.
And I think, I guess that's where, I mean, I heard the conversation about Hopkins and University of Maryland, but I, I guess my head is thinking, because we have been quote unquote discussing this often, and I know even during COVID, when we were literally zooming, I know that, you know, Matt and I talked about this at that point in Netflix. Well, I mean, 2017 is 2017, but over the years, I guess the question is, at this stage in 2024, 2025, when are we going to have more information? I mean, with, and this is not me saying that this is going to happen, but with the discussion of real property that we have, you know, in the town that may be something we're looking to sell, what if this were to come up? Somebody say, hey, I'd love to put a dot, 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 and dot, 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 because guess what? It's not your main strip, but it's also something you don't have. You know what I mean?
Sure. And, and I think that's a valid point, and I think an update is prudent. The only other thing I will add is that, to Steve's point, the extremely high barrier to entry, I'd rather us put a moratorium on something, recognizing that that is an unreasonable ask, in our opinion, that gives us a solid path to at least continue that conversation.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, 2017, it does seem like it's far too long for something as what seems like a really easy issue to help solve, right?
Or at least something that if we could have gotten some high relative guidance and or something within that timeframe.
We work pretty diligently to try and stay on folks.
Yeah, yeah.
To give us that information. It's just, it's really difficult sometimes to make.
I know, I know. Out there to perceive that, that it only comes up when it's time to discuss, because I know that that's not the case. But I would hope that, I mean, we're not the only town that's talking about this.
No.
And a lot of us have tattoos.
Well, and the other side is, is that I think now the conversation's starting to exist not just over here, but it's also taking place, at least my understanding from our conversations now on the western shore as well, in some areas that I think could help us get some attention on the issue that we're seeking. So hopefully, as, I'll not say that. Some folks on the committee think that they will be, not, not even on the committee, some folks that have taken part in our discussions believe that they will be, their time on earth will have expired by the time that we.
It's a bit more cooking.
So I hope it doesn't take that long. So it was shared, well, by Mary and Dave were both there when that was shared, and I was like, I hope it does not take that long, but.
That's very interesting.
And how else do you put it?
I know, I know.
Nice way to say it.
Yep.
All right, up next, motion 2024-34, the approval of the RFP 2024-04 for the electric AMI meter project. Electric Utility Director Tim Lawrence, a good run point.
Good evening, mayor and council. The town of Earl End and the electric department is seeking approval on the RFP for the electric advanced metering project. We've been working on this, well, we actually started talking about AMI metering probably 10 years ago, and finally has came around to, looks like we're going to be able to do it finally. There's been funding that's going to be available for the project. And anyway, I'm going to go over a little bit of the details about it, not page by page, because some of it is pretty technical. Just from the get-go, I just want to mention one thing. I do. Just from the get-go, I just want to mention one thing. I do have experience in AMI metering infrastructure for electric systems with the city of Manassas. I was there when it was installed and implemented. We actually already have a small AMI metering project downtown that's been here for about eight years. So I'm very familiar in how it all evolves and comes about and the installation project. Anyway, it's electric advanced metering infrastructure. It's the RFP that we're seeking approval. And the town of Berlin is seeking proposals from qualified vendors experienced in design, supply, installation, implementation, advanced metering and infrastructure AMI for electric utilities, advanced data through meter data management system, voltage monitoring, outage and indication, remote connect and disconnect for electric meters, prepayment services, customer portal. I'll talk a little bit about the customer portal. That will allow the customer to go in there and actually look at their real-time usage. So they can, you know, they can see where their most demand is, like their air conditioning system, heating system. And, you know, they can adjust it to make changes to lower the demand and that type of thing. The background, the town of Berlin provides electric border service to approximately 2700 to 2900 customers. The town residential commercial electric meters will be replaced as part of the project and include approximately. We have about 13 different class type of meters. You had three phase, single phase, 200 class. The AMI metering system has to be compatible with Tyler, our existing software program, customer information system. So it's got to be compatible with that. Also, project scope, control, monitoring, outage detection reporting. This one, an AMI system will actually help with outages. I can, I will be able to go into the system and actually, let's just take the Cater Farms for example. If Dulon Way, the right side of Dulon Way is out, it will actually show up that all those meters are down. And that gives us a focal point of where to go look at the problem because we know where it's fed from. So we'll be able to see that in real time as soon as it occurs. So we don't have to go hunting for the problem. It will actually kind of take us to that, which will cut down on the amount of time that the power is out. As currently envisioned, the scope of work to be contracted generally includes meter data management system, customer portal, AMI system testing, system training, annual equipment. Submitting requirements are, there is notify the town with intent to submit as soon as possible, which is optional, by no later than July 26th, 2024, 4:00 p.m. Then you have a hard copy submitter, which is due on Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. Electronic submitter is due Wednesday, I'm sorry, 10:00 a.m., Wednesday on September 11th, 2024. Questions and RFP, RFIs, any questions, information, that type of thing have to be in by Wednesday, July 3rd. And then I'll just go into qualifications and references. The, the vendors have to provide at least a minimum of four references that have preference for municipal utilities that they installed systems for, similar size to the town of Berlin. They also need to provide a summary discussion of vendors' experience as well as experience involved to post subcontractors, equipment, manufacturers, electric utility experience, name and location of the utility, name, job, title, year of deployment, public number, AMI endpoints, that type of thing, system integration experience. Evaluation process, there's different weights from 25 all the way down to five, the total of 100. Total life cycle, project, IT integration, warranty support, experience, financial strength, and references. Just to let you know, this, we've been working on this probably about three to four months now, between myself, Mary, Natalie, Booth Associates. So this has been a well thought out process. The town reserves the right to reject any or all proposals. Town also reserves the right to waive any or all infiniteness. Price proposal, plead all price forms provided. Forms are detailed in section four. Overall system characteristics provide schematic drawings, assistance components, configuration, backlog, communication, infrastructure, portable devices, distribution automation. An AMI system for the electric department will also actually give us the capability of actually communicating and motorizing our switches that are out in the field to where you could do it remotely without even having to send somebody there. You install what's called an RTU. It's a motor driven device on the switches, for example. If you know where the problem is, you can actually open and close it remotely from like a separate subsection, for example, that way you restore power faster. Support for outage management, voltage monitoring, that'll help us monitor the voltage out in the field. Good example, today we got a call from Worcester Prep. They were having a low voltage issue. We had to actually fill, send a field crew out there to check the voltage at the transformer with AMI meter. We can actually see it remotely in real time without even sending somebody there. Also, these will have what's called temperature readings. If it gets to a certain temperature inside the meter, it will turn off, send out a warning to the system that there's a potential hazard, fire hazard or something like that, which we can immediately send somebody out there to check it, to see what's going on with it. So to be able to do that, voltage monitoring, security. Example, maybe for maybe a while back, we had an issue in town with somebody that took some meters out and put some other devices in. The system will actually tell us if somebody tankers with the meter. If the meter is pulled out without our knowledge, we'll actually see that in the system. And we can send somebody out here to find out what's going on. The electric meters themselves will report KWH consumption, TOU programming, outage voltage monitoring, reverse energy indication, surface voltage, load profiles. Another thing that the system do will allow us to look at how many customers are on one transformer. And let's say it's a 50 kV A transformer, and you can look at the customer's demand overall and it warrant, you know, it want your, it requires a transformer that's less that size. Instead of being a 50 kV A, it could be a 25. Believe it or not, with the, no load on the transformer itself, it still takes energy to operate that transformer core. So it will help us basically make our system run better, faster, more efficient, that type of thing. AMI head in, system hardware, software, meter data management system, deployment process, it will go into that, training, support, maintenance, warranty, customer portal. Then we also have in here, each meter is broken down into quantities and prices per meters for each one. And it has the total amount of meters and the total cost for each one. And I believe the system is a 20-year warranty, the system on top of that. I believe it's 20, I believe. Am I correct?
Yes.
That's about it. We're asking approval on the RFP to advertise something, please.
Do we have any questions for Tim?
And this is part of the, the funding, this is part of the budget question.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have a question. The, you know how sometimes certain electric vendors, when you have like the peak demand, they're able to help for like the energy credits and stuff like that? Is there anything on the consumer level? I know when we push out our peak to peak stuff, that, is there any way that we can pass some savings along to the, the consumer?
That's something that we could look at and discuss with Booth Associates. I know Delmarva Power does something like that now, I believe Choptech does. Being a municipality, you know, we're like a nonprofit utility. So it's kind of hard for us to do those type of things, but I mean, it's something we could look at and discuss it.
And even if there's not like a revenue side, maybe what we can do is maybe see what type of customers are actually limiting their use during that period of time and maybe find some other way that we can reward, reward them. I think our little one said, what, money, coupon? Maybe we can expand some of her findings here.
We can give her pendants or badges or something.
Tell me, tell me Tim. With, with, with so much automation, how would that impact on your standard standing?
On the automation side? On the meter reading itself, it takes us about two to three days to read all the meters, the entire crew, all 10 of us. That's about a two, two and a half, three day process. So that would eliminate that. That's at the end of every month. So that part would be eliminated. As far as the automation side of it, where that would really come into play is during emergency situations. If there's a major power outage, storm that hits down, that type of thing. As long as we know where the problem is, it's not going to tell us, you know, pinpoint it, you know, within 100 feet of exactly where it's at. As long as we know it's, you know, within a block or two, that will enable us to remotely, now this is way down the road, we're talking years from now. You got, you got to get through the AMI installation project first. And then from there, when you get into automation, there, there's a lot that goes into that. And it's very expensive to also do that, so. But on the crew, it would help in emergency situations, but day to, day in and day out work is, really doesn't affect it that much.
I know on page one of the draft, I think it's page one of the draft, yeah, page one of the draft, page 23 of the packet, you have the words net metering behind some of these, some of these classes of meters.
Yes.
I know what that means, but I think a lot of folks don't in the sense of the amount of time that your crew spends for a solar customer. Yeah, so talk about that for just for a moment.
We have about, I think it's a total of like 56 to 58 solar customers in town. They have what's called a net meter installed on their system and it reads import and export power. Basically what we import to them and what they export back to us. And then that is banked, the credit part of it is banked and paid out through, sometime in April or May, I believe. And what it takes for, like David Davis, for example, he's our meter tech. He has to go to each solar customer, which there's about 58 of them. And he has to plug in his computer and download the information off of every meter. That takes anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes at each meter to do that. Then he has to go back to the shop, get on his desktop, and then he has to put it in Excel format, which takes time. And then from there, it also goes to Booth Associates on top of that to look at the data and make sure it's all accurate, and then that comes back to customer service. And then that's where the billing part comes in. So overall, that part of it, it will really, really help a lot in reducing the time that it takes to do that.
Yeah, I've seen, seen him at my office and.
It takes a lot.
And it's a shame because, you know, as customers, we have to upload our own data, sorry for SREC payments. You know, so it's just interesting. I'm glad to hear it's going to cut back on hours.
Yes. Also, on the, they'll have automatic disconnect and reconnect. For example, right now, if we have to go out and do a disconnect, you know, there's disconnect days. We may have 20 disconnects. Each meter will have a built-in remote disconnect. So we don't have to roll the crew out to do that anymore. You just push a button and it disconnects the power. That could be under, to say, fire department responds to a fire, house fire. And we get calls in the middle of the night that we need to come out toward the meter to shut the power down. You can actually remotely do that. I mean, it'll be a long process from now, but for example, where I used to be out in Virginia with our AMI system, I could actually do it from my house, from my cell phone. But that'll be a long time to do.
Thank you, Phil.
Yep.
I know that we spent a little bit of time on that before, but.
Oh, yes, definitely, yes.
All right. So anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-34? Seeing none, we'll take the motion to approve. So the motion by Vice President Burrell, second by Councilmember Dara, all in favor say aye. Call of both, let the record reflect the motion 2024-34 passed unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Up next is the dead item 3D, motion 2024-35. That's a request to waive permit fees. And Mary Boland for her own point.
This is a request that has been submitted to waive the permit fees associated with working planes at the middle school, the installation of the weather station. There's a lot of information in your packet about the two permits that they, one and four, as well as the weather station itself, where it will be located, and a little bit of information about what that will look like and how it will work.
So this is, see, when I read it, it said Berlin Mill, but then I had to actually look to the address because I was thinking that this was a BIS project. This is actually happening on Seattle.
So then in the motion, what we'll do is we'll clean it up to say Stephen Decatur. Decatur, Stephen Decatur Middle School, because Berlin Middle School, right, to a large group of our population is BIS. So, yeah.
Yes, definitely.
So we'll, we'll clean that up to say Stephen Decatur Middle. All right. Any further questions for mayor? We'll open it up to the public for any comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll take the motion to approve. Another motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Call of both, let the record reflect the motion 2024-35 passed unanimously. Up next is the dead item 3F, motion 2024-36. And this is an anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. And Sarah Gorthinko, executive assistant of the mayor's office is going to run point.
Good evening, mayor and council. You'll see in the packet, the guide for residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. It's a pretty standard, essentially boilerplate language around this plan that needs to be updated by the town every five years. And in determining our eligibility for the CDBG grant application, this is one of those pieces of information that needs to be updated, even though our particular plan and our work with the CDBG grant is not housing related. And this is something that should still be updated and current for the town of Berlin.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Okay, seeing none, any questions or comments from the public regarding motion 2024-36? Yes, just come forward, name, street name, or who you represent.
Okay, Samantha Fieldstick.
Come to the table if you don't mind, please.
All ready?
We know each other, but it's just easier for the public.
Sure. My other question was about the grant. I'm afraid I'm not up on which grant this is for.
So this is for the CDBG grant application. I'll let Sarah run point on that question.
Yes, we had a public hearing at the, after the last meeting, so on May 28th was our last one, related to the community development block grant, that's CDBG. Application that the town has submitted for $500,000 related to the community center on Flower Street. So the future Berlin Community Center. The grant application is really specific to the demolition of the multipurpose building and the current buildings where Head Start is run by Shore Up. And will be replaced by a beautiful community center.
So you'll be displacing Shore Up?
They, no, we will not be displacing them. They'll just be able to move to one of their other locations while we're building this community center. Yeah, it's just like to, to snow hell.
They'll be coming back to the.
They'll be coming, building.
Yeah. So they'll live there.
They're, they're a partner in the community center itself.
The anti-displacement relocation plan applies specifically to housing.
Right.
Which we don't have any in that grant. Naturally, I don't think that.
But it's a requirement of the grant.
I see that, okay. Thanks.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or feedback regarding motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-six from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
Motion to approve, motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-six.
So the motion by Councilmember Green, second by Vice President Burrell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of both. Let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is the agenda item three G, motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-seven, Karen Park Building demolition change order number four. Town Administrator Mary Boland's in room one.
Essentially, this is the addition of eleven thousand five hundred dollars to the contract as well as twenty days to the contract fine. This is to address work that needs to be done as a result of demolition that has been done today, as they expected when they appeared to the mayor and council in February, as they went through the undercover things that would then have to be addressed as they were discovered.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor?
Yeah, so the, thank you. So the, um, the eleven five is going to come out of the hundred and something thousand.
We are still, we are still well within the grant.
Thank you.
And in fact, it's better to spend as much of the grant as you want to.
Oh, no, absolutely. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, that we're good.
Yes.
So far, we're good. So let me understand what was discussed.
Sorry?
What's the change?
Oh, it's as they, as they did a portion of the demolition, as you'll see from the pictures that were included, where one wall touched another wall, one wall that came down touched another wall that remained, they need to essentially make it.
Seal it up.
Yeah, seal it up. Make it safe, make it closed up.
Now, with that, once, once we're done, I'd like for the areas that have then done reworked to receive some paint. So we need to start probably as they're getting close to finishing some of those, start looking at how we're going to dress it back up, because a portion of this is trying to make the buildings back to a point where we.
Well, look decent and make it so that they're able to get back on the tax rolls, hopefully. So. That's something that as we get, start getting closer, we can talk to them about submitting pricing for the cleanup that was discussed, as well as this kind of thing, and see where we're at.
Yeah, because to clean it all up to the tight foundations of the building, right?
Yes.
I thought I heard another, Councilmember Nick.
I was saying that this picture, this first one on six or seven, this is the picture that's like, we are, it's the backside of the front portion, correct? I think I remember, just in case somebody else, I think I know.
Here's the part.
Yeah, he discusses it, but I thought that's where it was. Like where the, here where the cafeteria area was, yeah. In case anybody was looking at this and waiting.
It's hard to, from an anonymous picture, hard to figure out what's wrong with it.
When, um, if possible, when they feel that we're getting close to a point where folks can take a field trip, maybe we can schedule a work session and they'll take a look together. It'd be nice to see how far we've made.
There you go. I get you. Ooh.
Okay. Any other questions for Mayor? Okay, seeing, having no further questions, we'll go to the public for any comments or feedback. Motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-seven. Okay, seeing none, we'll take a motion by Councilmember.
To approve, twenty-two-four thirty-seven.
Count of bingo, being out of the audience. Councilmember Nara made the motion, Councilmember Morris for the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the, all opposed. Let the record reflect that motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-seven passes unanimously. Thank you. Up next is agenda item number four, and this is discussion and approval, motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-two. These are the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS FY twenty-five contracts. It has David Gaskell running point. I will say that in the packet, let's get to it, these, uh, these are not up to par with what we originally had asked, right?
Well, there, there is something missing regarding the work sessions. We got a proposed, we got a proposal from David Fitzgerald about what the, what the language should be. And what, what I'm gleaning from the information is that they want to have a work session sitting at this table with the council across from them. So they didn't want to schedule those meetings, had, as we had discussed, which was, they would come when they're doing their quarterly report, after the quarterly report, we would address whatever concerns that the work session would have addressed. Their thought was that we would have to interrupt the general meeting, and then all of you would have to come sit here. They would sit where they sit. We'd have to move the camera over, and then we'd be in the middle of our, our regular session meeting, which really, that doesn't make any sense to operate that way.
So what was wrong with the way we were doing work sessions before?
Well, what, what, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
What, what they've done, um, they didn't give proposed language, which would perhaps, if you agree with, would accomplish perhaps the issue of not having many meetings. What they have proposed is that on the, on the, at the meetings they give their quarterly reports, that at the end of the regular session, the council would adjourn as it normally does, and then have the work session sitting at this table. But it would be after the entire general session meeting.
I thought that they didn't want to do that because we'd be tired. Correct.
That's what, that's what the proposed language was, but because what David ended up doing was leaving, uh, leaving the work session language as it has been in the past, and has, they have not changed it in these proposals, with the understanding that this is something that needs further discussion, and we would have to work that out at the first scheduled work session.
And our recommendation, and our.
That you guys don't want to have.
And, well, and our, it's not that we don't want to meet with them, I just want to be clear for everybody, where the council and, and the mayor and council are in their request to the fire company is that if, for example, tonight, if they were on agenda of item six, that for tonight's meeting, as soon as they would walk through the door, if we were on agenda item number two, we would conclude that before we would start with our items for approval, we would move them up, have our conversation with them and our discussion that follows for each entity, and then resume our normal meeting. And that is not working.
Apparently, they want us to be sitting over here.
So I have a recommendation for the mayor and council. Suppose we took a different approach. Suppose we did two biannual meetings where they come and present their data, and two biannual work sessions where we sit down at that table. So we go back to four meetings, but we can do everything.
Would you still have, would you still have the, under that idea, still have them do their presentation, schedule some time for discussion?
We could.
Or just do the presentation?
Twice a year, they do their quarterly.
We have questions now.
And then we would have two work sessions, the other two.
So the, the reports would say similar to our current form?
Current.
Okay. How does everybody feel about that?
I think that that's, I think that's a, that's a fair thought to throw out there. And I, and I just want to echo what the mayor says, it's, for, for me, it's not that we, that we don't want to meet with them, it's just that, you know, we meet with them eight times a year, and I brushed on this earlier with the contracts, no one else that we provide funding to, we meet with that often. Uh, and, and I think, you know, no one's less or more important, but, but I think that that is a good way to accomplish what we're real, all, what all of us are trying to really do. And I wouldn't venture to say, oh, it's probably not going to come out right, but if we're, we know we're meeting eighty times a year, we always can say where we have the next meeting. But if we're only having two work sessions, maybe we can actually.
Accomplish.
Hammer down on some things. So I, I'd like that idea to throw out to them.
I think it's reasonable. I think the reason that we put on discussion and approval, if we don't get something done on our end, we're going to be after July one with still lingering contract. So what I would like us to do is agree to what our consensus is, they can hear our discussion, and then those are our points. That is our, that is our contract that we are going to agree to.
Wait a minute. You agree with this contract, and you have to apply by those terms, right?
I'm saying with, we're gonna.
With amendment.
Correct. And then we're going to say, this is the contract that we agreed to, these are our amendments.
Got you.
I think it's going to be the best way to get something done.
I agree with that. And let me ask this question, if it's, if that is not done by July one, we would still send them the money, even if the contracts aren't signed yet, right?
We would wait until the contract is signed and then send them.
Okay. Just, just wanted to clarify.
But the goal would be, is that if we can present where we are on the terms, that we're not asking for anything crazy or outlandish here, that they could agree to those and then we could sign it, even though we don't meet again between now and the end of the month, end of fiscal year, right? So I like Jake's idea, everybody else?
Yeah, I like it. I think it still builds in the accountability factor of the reading of data, which the public should know. And I think it's fine to do it twice a year. It also accomplishes what they would like, just a casual informal setting, but it also accomplishes us wanting less is more with our meetings.
Yeah.
And it's two and two. Two and two.
Yeah.
So Gaskell, you got that for language?
Well, I'll.
I mean, but.
We're, we're going to have biannual, uh, meetings for the reports, the biannual reports.
Correct.
And we're going to have two work sessions.
Biannual, um.
Or at, at regular, regularly scheduled mayor and council meetings, you will have them here twice instead of four times.
Correct.
And two work sessions.
Correct.
And are we going to do this, um, meeting, work session, meeting, work session, or does that matter?
Every three months.
I, I would tend to say that we should alternate.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, as far as that.
Three months.
In other ways, with all parties, we're on the same.
Every three months.
Plane.
All right.
Yeah, you can still be quarterly, just you're.
Yes.
Splitting it out.
That was the major outlying item, right?
That was in, that was the only.
Well, the only other item is that in our work session, we discuss this. I think they're just sort of very accented in the packet.
It is page sixty-seven of your packet.
Thank you. Yes, so the amount for dispersment, and this is for EMS services, the amount that was in the agreement that we received was six hundred and five thousand, four hundred and five dollars and thirty-nine cents, when what's approved in the budget and what we have discussed with the fire company EMS, is that it would be a receipt of four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for FY twenty-five. So I would say that if we can pass that those are our terms, I'd like to be able to help them get an agreement in place of their money before, well, at the start of the new fiscal year. So any questions regarding that, and then we'll ask for the public?
Yeah, I guess I'm confused on, I'm unclear on how, how this process is, is going. So, so they, so this is what was provided to us, and we talked at the work session about changing things. There were some issues with some of the suggestions that we had. We hashed them out here. I, I guess what I'm, and then we're talking about the actual money part, I guess I'm a little confused on how we can approve something that we don't have in front of us yet. And then it got into the town attorney asking if we don't sign it, or they don't sign it by July one, are they still funded?
So I mean.
And then you, and mayor had said that no money will be dispersed until the parties have signed the agreement.
Correct. So there are two paths forward. You can say, that doesn't work for me, I want to see a final contract, at which time you would see that in July. Or you could say that the item that was outstanding was the meetings and the dollar amount that's already in the approved budget that we've already discussed. And mayor, if they reach those terms, we approve you signing the contracts for certain.
And this. What I think I would like, and I don't know if, if I'm the only one in here, that's, that's fine, but I, I don't want to have it happen again, what happened last year and the year before, where we had so many copies, and some were signed and some were not, and we had this, they had that. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Is there a way we can distinguish between the two of us?
I, I made an effort to make sure that that didn't happen, because the last two years, I drafted a contract and sent it to them, and then they would make changes and send it back on their template. We got to the point where it was very confusing. So this year, I haven't, I, I don't have a draft. They, everything's coming from, from David.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
So if we, if we, if the council agrees to approve the contracts contingent on the amendments that were Jay discussed, then David can make those changes and send it over. And, and that's the only copy there is. There won't be another floating around.
The thing about the money here is, if you have budget, like you have budget, in order to change that amount, you would have to do a bunch of.
Right, and I'm glad the number's pretty low. Yeah, so I don't want to get too far into this, but then if they're going to get the money anyway, aside from the agreement of how often we decide to meet and what the number is, in terms of dispersment, this is rather moot.
Well, we're not going to disperse funds if we don't have an agreed upon term. So if, if we, to Gaskell's point, come together on our items, which are, these are our amendments that we'll agree to, and then they say, hey, that doesn't work for us, then the next, then the next meeting, we're going to talk about it, but that's in July. And no money will be cut until that point.
I think, Jack, I don't want to speak for you, but I thought our China's, it's, if we disperse money, you know, it really means, I mean, that important thing is signed. We still disperse money.
And it's, and I understand that, I understand having some, right, and how much, well, I'm, I'm just throwing it out here, but my, my, my question is based on the fact of, of equity here. I mean, that we are, granted, it's a lot of money, but it's all tax driven, whether we send one organization forty thousand dollars a year, or this, these organizations total eight hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the only difference.
But I'm not, but I'm not done. But we ask a lot more of these two organizations than we do some of the other ones. We only meet with some of them once a year. And now we've, we're proposing to cut this down before, which is great. But what I'm asking is, and I think, I can sense it, um, the money's already there, it's going to go there anyway.
Well, to your point, well, I mean, I don't know. And if Jay's clarifying your point accurately, do we need a contract? I'll take you back to the start of the meeting when we approved motion twenty-two-four dash thirty-one. We're approving contracts for a hundred thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars, eleven thousand dollars, and here we're dispersing, how much?
Well, but, okay.
How much?
Far more than.
All right, well, as.
So do we need a contract? I don't know.
Well, but, but my, thank you. My point is, all of this is tax driven.
Well, we have the deliverable, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
The deliverable is agreed upon term.
Well, I don't want to pick on any of these, in the Joe's books, but the deliverable for one of them is if we see fireworks around.
Correct.
So, but we don't meet with them. This other, some of these other groups, we meet with once. When we did the five-year grant to AGH, they came here once a year, correct? If I remember correctly. We provide a lot more money to fire EMS, yes, but we use a meat. But we meet times a year currently. I'm just looking this in charge of equity. I feel like they're held to a little bit of a higher standard based on what we provide them, but it's all taxpayer dollar limit. That was my point.
And
So yes, we'll meet twice a year.
Any other comments or questions regarding motion twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two?
I just wanted to be easier.
I would love that.
I don't know how we get there, though. I mean, this is so, I mean, how much time, how much money are they spending with their legal fees? You know, how many, it's, I just, I don't know. And that's where I guess, you know, it's hard for me to rally for more meetings because we're all back here again, you know, at the same position. And I just, I don't, I'm just open to how we can figure out a way to make this not so painful. And so, I mean, I do, I support the direction that has been outlined, the, I guess it's the wording of the, about making it, that's so called. We all, I think if I understand it, I have to say it. We are saying that we we want to go in a direction of approving the contracts with the contingencies that have been outlined tonight. That way
Correct.
Biannual presentation, the biannual work session, the dollar amount being amended. Is that the same thing?
Nope, no, you're right.
Okay.
So all to Councilmember Nichols' point, they'll all make either
Yeah.
One presentation, one work session. One presentation, one work session.
On a three-month period, yeah. So I know we care for the public.
Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two? Okay? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
So I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two with the contingencies that have been stated.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Green.
Sure.
I have a second by Vice President Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Followed both. Let the record reflect the motion twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two passed unanimously. Thank you, Gasp. All right, up next, town administrators' report and departmental.
The only thing that I have to add, neglected to include in my report was a reminder that town, those town offices are closed on Wednesday, June nineteenth. The observance of IACAR June nineteenth. My gosh, my brain completely fried on me in that moment. I'm so sorry. So that's the only thing that I have to add.
Thank you. Any questions for Mary or the departmentals?
Could I add one thing? I know Arnold stepped out, but we do have three officers graduating from the academy, the police academy on Friday. So I just want to point that out. You will see some new faces doing some field training for the next three-ish months, and then they'll be certified sworn officers. So we're very happy to have them join.
And we've had a request from, from some of the council to see our new cohort. So I think we'll, we'll bring in, I think, the five or so that we've brought on
Yeah.
Recently to just
Six.
See everybody.
So Kelsey, with that being said, for the people out there, like you, whatever we're watching this on, how, where does that leave our, our department status wise?
Right now, we are fully staffed. We have one retiring at the end of this month. So he will, once he retires, we'll have a vacancy again. But as of this moment, we are fully staffed.
Say that one more time, really.
We are fully staffed. So it's very exciting.
Well, the difference, a little bit of timing, is that
And the people they've brought on have been, I mean, they've been great. Everyone's really nice. They're, they seem excited to be involved in the activities and the community and stuff. They, you know, they want to. I think it's great. So happy to have all of them.
And three graduating and then one entering the academy for the next round.
And then we've had two certified come over here recently. That's where the six come from. So, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, exciting stuff.
All right. I need
I just have a question for Jim. Street sweeper schedule for my neighborhood. I, I just keep missing it. What, what is the expectation?
A lot of it, it falls back on crewing. We can't really set a weekly schedule with it because it it ends up kind of, crewing stuff is some of that issue. But we do hit, we do hit, generally, I was over, actually, I was on the sweeper last week. And I did all of the Bray Route and Flower Street and all of the trees and Chow. Are you saying you're not seeing it or are you saying that there are not?
I'm saying that I'm not seeing it.
Okay.
And, and, and what time of day should I be looking for the sweeps?
So generally, when we start sweeping, we start downtown and that'd be at like seven AM. From that time, we would start dispersing to other parts of the town. So generally, I would say you would see the sweet sweeper, the street sweeper, say from ten to eleven in that area. Not, not at seven AM because we try to hit the areas that where there's not as much parking at that time, like downtown. That's why you'll see, you'll see us downtown in the mornings, but a lot of times we'll work over later in the day.
Mr. Ross, that five times off that. Sweet.
I can't do it.
We could get people to dance on the brooms.
I said it earlier.
You can start playing some of your music.
Yeah.
That's a side gig. Any more questions for the departmentals? All right. Thank you. You're on the mic.
Chow streets, Chow streets, Chow streets, Chow streets, Chow streets.
Sweeper.
Oh, my goodness.
Chow street, street sweeper schedule.
Whoa. Man, we're gonna be on W, you know, all along. All right. So let's move on to public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? Or attempt to try and say what Gene would say on the microphone. Yes, just come forward, name the street name. I know we know each other.
Welcome. So they still operate, I suppose.
Want to give it a try? Huh? Need a tongue twister.
Oh, no. I don't even want to be
Offended up the other way.
So there, June John seven three six three certainly. I noticed recently when I was in the park that the pollinator garden, the pollinator patch that we have is looking a little dilapidated. And there was a sign about the importance of bringing gardens and pollinator patches and, you know, how you can do your own backyard and how it's with your environment. And that sign is completely unreadable. I don't know if you guys would have a contact point that I could reach out to to, you know, renew this sign or get it redone. I think it was completed by like the Department of Agriculture, perhaps? I'm not entirely sure. But I just
It was done by our interns a few years ago. We had some that were helping.
So
Sorry, I just didn't hear you say which park and where exactly.
Oh, Seating.
Seating, you're part of, okay.
Right by the, the green garden.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll reach out to our portico shop.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gene.
Anyone else from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the council. Sorry, I'm Vice President Burrell.
The only thing I had was this street sweeper.
All right, Councilmember.
As we all know, the farmers market is a huge success. It's going gangbusters. I've had requests from several merchants about extending it at least a month, maybe two months, I don't know. But that's something, it'd be good if we could look into that, see what it takes.
It ends now in what, September?
September, but they want it to end in October because it's still the baseball.
And you're saying that for the, the downtown merchants?
They want to see it in September.
So what does that mean for the people who are actually out there providing produce and things? Do they still have wares to provide?
Well, we may have to change the mix up. Some things that can be sold. Ivy's not here.
Ivy's not here. It has come up at the merchant meetings and they've discussed it previously. I think Ivy's point as about our farmers market being so sought after and so high quality and that by October, November, there's not the same like local acquiring.
For sure.
Like how many pumpkins can you buy kind of thing? I don't want to speak for Ivy, but I feel like in the merchant meeting discussions, the like shoulder season markets have, it just doesn't really, I don't know.
It wouldn't present as well
Dilute our current very successful farmers market.
Yeah, I think the key would be whether or not they have the vendors to participate. That's kind of but nobody even tried to see what
They've talked about it.
They have talked about it.
Well, let's ask Ivy, and then maybe she can circle back to the next
We have another merchant meeting this Wednesday morning at the thirty, so I can bring it to Ivy.
Yeah, it's something they want, the merchant, if I can see that, whatever that takes.
You know, since you're talking about farmers market and time, I really would like to see, if possible, it extended at least now beyond what God can Well, that's you, because usually I don't get to attend, and if I do get to attend, I'm really rushed because I'm in church in the middle of the morning. So if that time could be, be extended, I think it would serve me well.
I think that the time extension, we might have to explore for next year because we do have a farmer's market. Right, and a farmer's market manager, I think, that helps stay on and like set up some stuff and help break down. But I think that's a point that we can explore now for next year. We can explore, your point, hopefully, a little sooner than that, maybe capture this year if it's, some of it's functional. The other thing is, I know that some of the vendors, what do they say? The sleepy bird doesn't get the worm or what is it?
The early bird.
Early bird. They sell out pretty quickly.
Yes, they do.
So I will say that, I mean, the, the market does dry out naturally just a little bit before that time period, but we can at least take a look.
Well, on the same token, I do know many of the vendors, like my, my daughter, grandson and I get here at about quarter of, or quarter of nine, just so we can park. And he likes to get his stuff out of the car and take his stuff and walking around. And no joke, by like nine oh five, a good portion of the things that we've come here for are gone. So I will tell you though, that many of the vendors will say to you, here's my card. Give me a call during the week with what it is that you're specifically looking for, and we'll have that item earmarked for you when you come next week. So many of them will, many of them will work with you. You know, maybe if they know, hey, Mr. Burrell, so I'll get there at one oh five or whatever. I got these things packaged up and waiting for him.
I will say, while we're on the topic of the farmers market, somebody's coming this week, starting this week. Anybody know who that is?
Jimmy Charles, who?
Oh. It's bigger than the governor. It's Bennett's Blueberries.
Oh, yeah.
We're, they were gonna Oh, really? I thought they started next week.
No, they're here.
I'm, well
Got them yesterday.
You missed out.
I did miss out.
Yes, I was like, ooh.
Waiter Rob Saltman.
I will say they will
Mayor, can I make a comment about the farmers market? At the last meeting, Ivy mentioned that some of the vendors were having problems with the card swipes. Well, as of today, I've worked with the AMI provider downtown and we installed a separate internet service for Pitt Street. And if you go on your cell phone and you're on Pitt Street on Wi-Fi, you'll see come up as farmers market.
Oh, I am glad for you.
Now, if the speeds are not fast enough, they told me they can throttle it up or down, whatever needs to be done. But right now, it's wide open.
No password.
No password.
That's awesome. Thanks, Tim.
From a cybersecurity perspective, I will tell you that that's not advised.
I would also like to mention that they also said if Wi-Fi, if Wi-Fi starts becoming overwhelmed, I mean, by, you know, the same people in the apartment using it, they can actually issue a password for it, which just the vendors can use. That's all said.
I like that too.
But that can be added to
Getting blueberries for days. All right, I think that, Councilmember Nichols.
I will say, this past weekend, I was in Columbia, Maryland, oh, no, it wasn't Silver Spring. And they have a huge farmers market on Saturday. Their downtown area is bustling. We, Silver Spring is one of those towns, just like Columbia, that was built purposely to, to be one of those multicultural hubs and keep people outside. And I can say to you, we, my husband and I, my mother and stepfather, we, my family, because a lot of us were there, spent hours out there, but in comparison, Berlin can really, we are running with the big kids. Like what we had here in comparison to what I've, what I saw there, we're right up there with the quality and the amount of foot traffic coming through. We do this every Sunday. And even when it's raining, folks are out with their umbrellas, making it through Pitt Street, doing their thing. Kudos to Ivy and the crew for what they do here. It, it's comparable to those that are happening in other towns.
Yeah. Councilmember Rors?
I don't know. Good. So it's my turn.
Delivery, right?
Kick it, folks.
Well, I don't have anything, so.
All right, Councilmember Green, give this together.
Sorry about that.
You're old giddy at the nine.
So I could have one thing. I wanted to kind of get this group's opinion and then maybe some direction. I'm a little bit concerned. I've been watching the planning commission meetings and I'm just a little bit concerned about, do they have the tools right now to address what is coming before them? You know, I've got a few calls about Wednesday night's meeting when there's a planned subdivision between AAA and Bay Street of one thirteen. I'm just wondering, and I hate to, we talked about the M word earlier. I'm just wondering if we're at the point where we need a temporary moratorium at the planning department level on certain level projects. And I know, and I believe, Mary, I think you've been sitting in on those meetings as well. I find them to be painful. And I've had conversations with planning commission members and they agree. And I know with our current vacancy at the planning director level, I believe that's going to be months before we have a leader in. Because assuming they have positions now, I don't know that the process goes great. But I really was kind of curious if I could request the planning commission how to open an dialogue on this topic. It's not, I know it can't be on the agenda from too late to begin, but it could be like this, the planning commission member could bring this up amongst everyone and have this conversation, whether or not they think they're on the front lines of it. I just sense from them and watching their meetings that they're wringing their hands a bit with what's coming before them. So.
And with this pause on certain issues, you're thinking the duration would be
See, I am kind of, with six months, you know, shorter than longer, or even less than that. I think that this conceptual plan is coming up on Wednesday. It's going to put the planning commission in a bit of a pickle, frankly. I think it's going to, and I don't know whether they're going to fall on it, if they're supported or not. And I've heard from neighboring properties about it. I guess I just don't want us to get to the point where, honestly, I listened to the conversation about West Street and that, I guess, well, basically they wanted to subdivide parcel, correct? And, you know, I heard a lot of tough talk from folks and, you know, it's on one hand where we want infill development, but that's not quite the right infill development. And I don't think that's an interesting dichotomy. You know, we have a lot of concerns, I think, in the community about retaining what we have. I'm just concerned about something coming down pipe that runs counter to what we are in the process of going with the comp plan, the commercial architectural design guidelines. are in the process of going with the comp plan, the commercial architectural design guidelines. It's just something that's been on my mind and, you know, I'd be interested to hear what planning commission members have to say about it. This is certainly not asking for anything to be put on our agenda right now. I just would be interested in having them discuss it amongst themselves. And I know I do believe in the bringing it up through the subcommittee level, allowing them to make a recommendation. So that's really just where I am. I just find us, the planning commission, in very difficult positions of late, you know, while lots have been a member of our generations, but to the point where I think we, that they have taken the lawsuit threat to get it across the finish line because the planning commission's having a difficult time. They didn't really like what they saw, but they didn't have the tools to direct the advocate in the direction.
Right. So now with that, what's your take on Rick's? How does, if you feel like this is a better side conversation, but do you feel that Rick has the rapport with the planning commission enough that they seek his guidance? Or do you feel that it may be better to wait until we have somebody in that capacity?
His position as an independent consultant is that it is consulting. He, he is able to look through the code and bring their attention to the areas that the code does or does not address, whatever it is that is trying to be addressed. He is not a full-time employee of the town. He's not an employee official of the town. It would not be putting him or them in a good position. He's not.
And I understand what you're saying, but I, and Rick's been phenomenal.
I will go on the record by saying he has been a huge help.
But he was also clear with us what he felt the role that he was stepping into was, and I think it's accurately summarized in your, in your response. I also think he's taken it a step further, just so everybody's aware, and he's had some meetings with folks on the planning commission and other boards of commission to try and help bring some understanding around projects. But I see your point that, that the scope of planning director is still missing.
Absolutely.
And with that, I would say that the shorter duration of time, the better. And if we can get somebody, Kelsey, correct me if I'm wrong, the goal would be to hopefully have some interviews in person in July and then have somebody in that role.
Hopefully by the end of the month.
Correct.
My expectation though is, is that someone at that level is probably bound to have to give 30 days' notice to the new position.
Absolutely. And we wouldn't want to pressure them to do something like that that would not be. But I think September would be a reasonable timeframe for some of those risks. Don't you agree?
It's hard to say because that person will have a learning curve as well.
Yeah, but I think they're going to have to learn on the fly a little bit on that.
Yes, I would agree and I think they would still be able to form the function of reviewing the code and saying, you know, this doesn't work because, or this does work because, or you can do this because of that. The bigger picture, the bigger question of the comp plan and the design standards. That is going to take a lot longer than three months, six months, a year possibly. I hope not, but I think to have somebody that's well thought out and that you're not having to come back to constantly and adjust and tweak, there's an expectation that of course you will do some of that, but it shouldn't be with every new issue that comes up. That's going to take a little while.
But that's not the, that's not where your brain's at. Like those things are working.
All of this goes to answering the bigger issues, but.
Yeah, I do want to say, I don't want to, you know, drive around town, there are projects that are single-family home developments, things like that are taking place. There's, I don't want to stifle that, you know.
Large projects.
So I guess, and that's where maybe it's a legal question, you know, so how we structure it and also understand there's certain, there's plans already submitted, you know, that is a basically grandfathered in essentially, without some changing rules in the middle of the game. I guess I looked at it, I think a pause, and it's, the roar is a moratorium, but I really looked at it as a pause.
So would you say if, so for clarity and simplicity, moratorium for sure, are you, if I'm hearing you correctly, are you saying a pause on larger commercial projects right now?
So I guess.
Could be residential. Could be residential.
Residential too, yeah. Because.
Okay.
Large track developments.
Well, just look at the one that's coming.
That's not, that's, I hear you when you say that's residential because people don't live in it, but it's really a commercial project because somebody's, somebody's building that entity. It's not like a, a single-family dwelling. It's not like a private property. You know what I'm saying?
Plus, why is it a residential build?
Okay, I hear what you're saying in that regard, but it's not, and I guess clarity in that sense.
But Steve's point is correct. We don't have the tools.
Yeah, we don't.
That the planning commission needs to direct people in how to bring out Berlin architecture and guideline or design in their developments. A microtalent classic example.
Steve's pulling the third one pretty out. Yeah, and I, I in full clarity have heard that conversation with some others as well. The duration was longer and a bit more wide. I think having a short, because I do think it has impacts on the economics of Berlin, but I think that if you focus it in on getting somebody in the role and then bringing that in, that's when that would stop, right? We would start back business as usual with somebody in the helm, learning and working with our board commissions.
And I may be overspeaking or maybe getting ready to say something wrong today. Please, please jump right in.
On it.
I would think that you could still allow people to submit things for Rick to look at and tell them where their clear stumbling blocks are. You just won't get it to the site plan review.
Yeah, exactly.
And make that clear to them upfront.
Yes, make it clear to them upfront that they, they can sit down and talk. Even, even Dave Engelhardt would talk about that, that things came in as concepts all the time and never went any further. So, you know, that, I think, rather than completely stopping people in the tracks and we don't even want to talk, we can, we can still let people start exploring. It just will not get to the stage of site review.
Yeah, I like that. I think that's very well said. I think like Wednesday night is a conceptual fact.
It's all concept, yes.
Yeah, I agree. That's, you know, that's a great opportunity for the developer to hear what the planning commission has to say. You know, the ingress egress off of Bay Street is a concern I'm hearing, but it's going to be a concern also for Platteville. So, you know, I think that's just one of those issues, but I thought you worded that.
So the direction or request, so the request would be to have the planning commission discuss a temporary pause, otherwise known as a moratorium, on site plan review and approval until we bring on our new planning director. Is that what, is that a summary of what we've just discussed?
That is a summary, I believe. That will not hurt the town in any way as far as the site plan or anything else.
If you're putting a short term on it, and I would put, go ahead and put a date on it, August 31st or September 31st. You know, whichever, however you choose to go.
August 31st.
And you can review it again or you can lift it earlier than that, as I mentioned the potential.
You don't think August 31st is too soon?
I, I think it is.
I would say it's give it six months and then.
No, too long, too long.
Can I keep over September 15th? I mean, I just, I.
It's got implications on economic.
I do understand that, but I don't see.
This is also an issue that the planning commission needs to discuss first.
Yes, that's true. That's true. What, what I am working on is I don't anticipate the planning director being in place until mid-August, I think, August.
I mean, because we are beginning interview, beginning second rounds of interviews on July 8th. And yeah, like Mary said, I think at this level, most people probably get 30 days, so.
All right, September 30th?
I think that's, yeah, relocation and stuff.
But I would say the chances are it probably should come from the planning commission to the mayor.
It should be a recommendation on the planning commission.
Right, but we're just asking that they talk about it. They can structure their recommendation.
Right. Yeah, so I know I'm late in the game because it's Wednesday night meeting, can they basically have this sort of conversation, because they have comments right at the end.
They can choose to or choose not to. I mean, it's really up to them.
Yeah.
But we're going to at least pose the question. That's really going to how, how it's going to be.
Okay. No, that is, these are your comments. But I just wanted to make sure that, that we're kind of clear on this. I mean, I, Steve's point is bright and I agree and I appreciate that. But if we're holding off, I don't want to go longer, but if we're holding off until we get somebody in the planning director role, we still have the issues of we have not completed the comp plan, we do not have the design standards. So I agree and I think this is the right direction because we're getting a tool in, well, I don't mean it that way, but we're getting an additional helper to help with the tools in the toolbox, but we're still missing those two issues. So pausing, I think, is a great idea, but I would like the planning commission to consider that in this discussion because otherwise we're just moving the real big issues here to when we get somebody.
Kicking again, down the road.
But that's the third point.
But I think it's a worthy discussion for them to have and I appreciate and understand them coming to us, but I do think that they do need some clarity from here so that they're not spinning their wheels down on the committee.
But this also does not preclude them from working on those items, working on generating among themselves, what are some frequently asked questions that we need to address? Because when we bring in a candidate to occupy the role of planning director, it'd be nice to be able to say, this is kind of what we have heard, what have you heard in your experience? Can we put something on the website? That's not a hard ask. But use some of that time to be able to address some of those things so that we can hit the ball.
Hit it.
And they're also going to ask probably.
What do you think?
What you said, it was not a hard ask. Scus.
I would also, I would also think that.
It's like.
I would also think, just to put further on my comments on Steve's comment, is the planning commission, I think, should, is going to have to really think projects, what's, what is already in the works, what could be grandfathered in, what would be paused, what would not be, and what triggers in the process determine what stays in pause mode and what is, if any. That's, that's what I would like them to, to talk about, a lot.
I, I think that when you start drilling down into those kinds of details, they will need to sit at a table with you all, so that you're all on the same page.
That's reasonable.
I mean, yeah, but I think initially, if they can do this, I think we're off to a good start.
I think we could put a short-term, short. It's the sweet stripper. A short-term moratorium in place without, without causing too much heartburn at this point, that greater details do need to be discussed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You mean to do anything?
Yeah, draft it.
I know.
Draft it and sell it.
And I'll be honest with you, it hasn't even failed. It's a, it's a word that I've sort of spoken about in the air.
Just with everything given.
Given. Yes.
All right, up next, Joe Diame, comments from the mayor. The one thing I wanted to talk to you all about, it shouldn't only take about an hour, 15 minutes maybe, no. One of the board's commissions, committee members, through my passing, I was telling them how, how nice something looked and they had said, you think the town could at least honor us in some way? I said, well, what do you have in mind? And they said, even an ice cream cone would make us feel great. So through that process, we've talked with Island Creamery, talked with Sarah, Mary, Natalie. We're trying to get the number of board commission committee members, I think it's 62 plus the volunteers that serve at the Walton Center. There will be a charge coming up for, under this fiscal year, it'll be, I think Natalie recommended the line item that they go under, but we're going to prepay for a single scoop of ice cream cone at Island Creamery, create some little certificate from the mayor and council, and it should be going out to the board's commission committees as a thank you for their service. So just an FYI.
They lost both of them at the scoop room, which we appreciate.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, write it down.
Scoop service, your service.
Nine o'clock.
I'm saying, you never know if it'll come out of my mouth after nine.
Mayor.
Hold on me. I like it. Thank you, councilman. Yes.
You have one more thing, Vanner.
Oh, no, you have one more thing. Not me. That's you. That is your thunder.
Oh, yes, I'm very happy to report to you all that Berlin is a Vanner city.
Woo-hoo!
The Maryland Municipal League gives that honor out to cities that meet their requirements and they really commend the elected officials for maximizing the variety of Maryland Municipal League resources available through our membership in the MML and that we are really congratulating you all for playing a large part in serving as really great advocates for municipal government. And then also to me for keeping track of it and sending it in to make sure, I'm sure that you all have actually been a bit Vanner city. I know that we were in the past and we lost a designation.
I was about to say, that was a goal, when we became, when we were elected, the four of us four years ago, that was, one of the goals was for Berlin to become a Vanner city again.
That gun truck.
So they have our new flag?
They're not doing that anymore, I don't think, are they?
I think they're just presenting something to you all at the.
I think we didn't have to get there.
Well, I don't think they're doing the flag.
They didn't ask for a flag, but they did ask.
We used to do the parade of flags and all, and we haven't done that for a couple years, but Sarah put that on her goals too, to champion for all of us for calendar year 2024, and you've succeeded, so.
It does.
Thank you, I see yourself.
Keeping us straight.
And there will be an opportunity for you all at the MML conference, I believe.
It is a little idiot.
There'll be a photo presentation, I think, when everybody, all the elected officials will be able to attend.
And Sarah will have the time, but I'd like all of us.
I'll get the details.
And I'd like all of us to be there as many of us as we're supposed to be. Yeah, we'll try to get a picture of everybody that they can. If not, what we'll do, we'll bring it back here and we'll do a picture for our next mayor council. Thank you, Sarah.
Of course. Congratulations.
That is phenomenal.
Congrats. Thank you, Sarah. That's always the key, is someone to spearhead it and keep it moving.
She made one of hers and she succeeded.
All you have to do is.
All right, comments from the press, Mary? Has Steve hired you yet?
I feel the question.
Go ahead, sorry.
Are you, are you, what are you all doing in bathtub right now?
I'm not pushing Jack again, if that's what you're asking. Tim, are Mario and Luigi? Mario and Luigi are injured. Because Caleb's got a little one.
They're working, they have them.
Nobody's helping the town.
We have a team, but there was an injury.
Oh, what?
I have lost some weight.
I think.
He doesn't know aerodynamics.
That's because.
That's why I lost the weight.
I talked the other day, they had, they're fully injured and there's four alternates. So from my understanding, there's 20 injuries with four alternates as of this dime right now.
Wow.
So we're having a busy night.
All right.
The weather's going good.
Are you catching this year? Anybody catch a bathtub?
Oh, yeah, I'm at the other end of the roads.
You're catching a bathtub?
I'm spectating.
Oh, they got you out of that?
I was doing a little dance in Merle last year. That was a one-year contract.
I'm just cheering for this.
Is he coming back?
Is Brad coming?
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, he's like an icon.
Yeah.
What color cowboy hat?
I didn't get that.
All right, we've hit a new hour. Mary, anything else?
I think.
I had last case, sorry.
The ordinary can happen all the time.
Anyone else in the press? Anybody want to join the press? Okay.
Move to a juror.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I'm going to ask if it's opposite.
Wait, can we take a picture with it?
Yep, yep.